Little rockin' and we make Los Angeles areas. I mean way more than other places and because it's so far from the landfill for them. So we need to get one landfill back so they say, ah, it's too far. Take twenty thousand gas, I'm gonna dump it out of the damn room. So and we, the first time we went over there, we went over the one green waste and one mutual solid trash, a forty yard dumpster, and we had a full within a half an hour, I think. This time we're gonna go with four mutual solid waste dumpsters. I was trying to get a fifth one over there, but the purchase already in order was already done. So that's the next time.
So for the the vouchers for residents, is there, I said there's a limit, is there like a cap? Like hey, they should go sooner than later to get them because?
No, no, no. So we hope we can make it through all twelve months. The way we dealt with the cost debt problem is uh is we've, we're saying it's only one per property owner. At one point, if somebody owned eight parcels, we would give them sixteen vouchers. And so that's, I mean, that's sixteen hundred dollars. So we're not doing that now, but we think we can make it. So hopefully we'll go through the rest of it. If we do run short of money, I will beg our downtown office for the work cash like I did two years ago.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yes, you know, that's right. The, the, and the way the, the landfill road report goes, our first come, first served. We do want that we'll shut it off with a voucher, with a, a long quote. But in actuality, I've been saying there were vouchers hanging to the people that said, here, you can't dump it here, please drive the light cars, that's twenty miles away. But please drive the light cars, it needs this, you can dump it free.
And it's open now.
Right, and it's open now, yes, yes. Other reports, we gotta report back the original point from your question regarding the sign on the back of the?
Uh, seven eleven.
Seven eleven. They say, no, that's allowed. Any, any side of the building that faces a road gets to have a sign.
Well, okay, so that's, and that's the thing. That is exactly the opposite of what they said in two thousand seven and eight.
So, and I don't know.
Yeah, and so they, they said, they, you know, that's what the sign ordinance that came written down regulations said.
Actually, that's not what it says. It says a sign on frontage. And they, they interpreted frontage to be was that it had to be the frontage was the street that you access the, the business from. Or it had a door, entrance door on, that's frontage as well.
Yeah, they had, I should have memorized this.
We, we, we got the email from Tina, that's the problem.
Did you?
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was, that's the problem.
Does it sound like another word besides frontage in this building?
So that, that's what, that, that's why we had the conversation.
And oriented toward one or more public street by way of public places. Or that's.
So that's, so what we're at, I sent out an email on June sixth, and I don't know if you've got a chance, but I wanted to send it to Director Bodak, so.
Oh.
Well, I, you know, he was gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, okay.
All right.
Is there a sign on the three-way side?
Yes, yeah. It's on the on-ramp side.
Yeah, on the on-ramp. So like I was, yesterday, I thought about this, I overthought this maybe probably. And so as I was coming up north now, like you can't, you can't see it. So like there's no opportunity even. So it's sort of like you're like getting on three way, like, well, yeah, there's several of them back there. Great, now like we got Escudero, turn around, I mean, like you're talking.
It also, it, it also doesn't matter what the sign ordinance says in two thousand twenty-two because our C S D says the purpose of signs, and it's for location, not for advertising. And if you're putting a sign on the on-ramp, that person's no longer trying to locate your business. They're leaving them. So it's complete violation of C S D. I don't give a darn what two thousand twenty-two says. It, it, and by the way, they had now, this email that we're sending Director Bodak is asking for interpretation. Because there was an interpretation, and that's what the frontage meant. And now it means something different. So we want a copy of the new interpretation and the basis for it. No, I'm serious. It's the whole garbage that she does.
Well, and that's why, yeah, C S D starts to be a suggestion. It's like, it's like there's no key to what's going.
Well, no, it's completely, so anyway.
So would, so would Acton Auto and Victor's Auto Shop and Motor Shop also be there as well?
Well, they're not supposed to be up there. Regional planning agreed, but nothing ever happened. This is different though. Those signs were ever approved, the ones where there's a real estate sign that's still there.
They just put them there. And so the problem is this is like saying, here, life is approved, and they're like, yep.
We're rubber sticking.
And so that's, that's, one is just, one is violation. The building's like, yes, they're approved, well, wait.
Yeah, that's why, in two thousand seven, that's why the, the Arco, it's all white as you drive up the on-ramp. That's why there's no signs, there's not supposed to be any signs. I think we still had a little lit up sign on the backside of all those commercial businesses because there's no entrance doors. The only business that has a sign on facing the freeway is McDonald's, and that's only because that's where you walk in. So they have.
Their front door.
And that's how it's been for twenty years and, and.
Longer.
And, and, and that was actually writ large on a big deal we had with the, the Anta Project. And, and that was, that was what the, Regional Planning guaranteed Supervisor Antonevich in a meeting with acting town council members, Richard Gleifman. And so that's how it's almost been, and suddenly this happens. And it doesn't seem to matter all of the information we give. They just said, well, we wouldn't. And, and, and there's something going on at Regional Planning that they are, they, they're changing everything without even talking to us, without getting a day about anything we say or the, or prior interpretations. What does, I'm not even saying what the community wants. I'm saying what you told Supervisor Antonevich in, in, in the meetings.
But that's what I'm changing those, is that all still is correct. First, desire for certain standards. We stand.
Exactly.
So like, that's what I'm changing.
It's furthering the C S D, exactly, exactly. Otherwise, every commercial business, well, can, can make themselves thirty-five feet high and put a big freeway serving signs. And that's, that's how that, that, anyway.
So we now. Um, okay, I don't see anybody else from any other agency. I guess it will change once we get closer to the election.
I'm here, Jeremiah.
Yeah, I'm good to you. I got library, you have Assembly, Senate, House, any of those locations. Get you in one second. Do your.
All right. Um, so a couple of programs are coming up, Monday, the twenty-fourth, starting at two, going to six. Our children's library, which is actually like a stuffed animal sleepover. So they bring their stuffed animals, they read stories, they tuck them in for bed. And then they come back and pick their stuffed animals up the next morning. Maybe some shenanigans happen at the library though. I never know.
Who's sponsoring that?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, you're doing it.
Yeah, my children, well, not me personally, my children's library.
Oh, so the stuffed animals are sleeping.
Yes.
Yeah.
Stuffed children. I was like, oh my gosh, guys are working on the stuffed animals. Oh, God. Hey, that was tricky. Send it out for all of my grandchildren.
What time do we get?
Not really, not coming back. And then the other big one I've got, Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, five o'clock. I mentioned it last time, so we got the sushi demonstration.
Oh, yeah.
Remember for that. Um, on the upcoming holidays, Wednesday, the nineteenth, or it goes for twoteenth. And then we'll be closed for July fourth, for the end of the state. And then the last one I mentioned, um, I'm sorry, do you have people go, mention that they didn't know about this? So reminding everybody, hey, I have those free villages in the library. I know the market sees sells them for twenty dollars a pop. I have them for zero dollars a pop.
Hey.
Why is this now? Um, but I mean, come on, get them if you need one, or if you have someone who mentions it to you. I mean, come, come get them, no questions asked.
Oh, how many can you give for the senior slip? I did it last time, last year, you gave me some.
Uh, it's two, the one per house, one per person. So if you, yeah, if you got a handful of people in your home, like maybe you take a few for your home.
I know. Well, I was thinking for the members of the seniors club.
Yeah, I don't have a huge, my meeting that for everyone to see yourself, but a neighbor to come in and.
Well, I think I'll be qualified last time.
So.
Okay. Thank you. Right, you'll save me some then.
Thank you. All right, Debbie Martinez.
Hi, everybody. Um, I don't have very much because we did the stats last time, but I do have a couple of things. First off, with the Fourth of July parade, I want to remind everybody that this year we are gonna enforce the seven thirty hard closures for the parade route. So if you're not, if you're not, you can walk afterwards, but you can't bring a vehicle after seven thirty anywhere on Crown Valley where we normally have our roadblocks. So make sure to spread the word and plan accordingly because I guess it's been an issue the last couple of years on that. Um, and another kind of little reminder to have a little patience with us during the summer here. Like, uh, this weekend, for example, we had seven deputies for all of Pondale Station because we're short, short, so short staff. And then we had the fire in Awedosee and the Cassidy Fire at the same time, which we ended up getting deployed at. Um, so please be patient with us if you get, you know, vibes of a delay. It's, you know, we'll get to you guys. For example, right now, we have twenty-six people on, but half of that is at the fire. Um, that's kind of how mutually works. If, if we need bodies when we have incidents, Santa Cruz comes and helps us, but we also have to help them when, when they have stuff going on. So that's like a normal in-service. Um, but yeah, so this weekend was pretty rough. I was the only vehicle for, the only car for, and this is not my normal spot, it was overtime for all Lake Hurries, Lake Lisbon, Acton, Awedosee. Any of you guys have anything for us? One, yeah, uh, one other thing. Um, I, I am trying to post more on Facebook as far as like when things are happening now, like fires and everything. I do not direct message me, I do not have Messenger. People keep on direct messaging me, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to make people think I'm ignoring them. But my, my phone number, my email, all over my Facebook page, all over the place. So if you guys need anything, there's other ways to get ahold of me. It's just, I want to get information out there when we do have fires, evacuations, red closures and stuff like that to out to the public and out to the groups as quickly as possible. Um, but I'm not gonna sit there and, you know, go back and forth with people on the comment section or anything like that.
Yeah, I totally get that, so. I, I appreciate that. Well, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all right. I could do.
Okay. Um, so this issue's come up because, because trying to, it became something about all the, all the unlawful outdoor storage facilities. They're lawful because they don't comply with the zoning code. They don't comply with the site plans that they've had approved, and many of them never had site plans. Um, and many of them are on land that's not even allowed use. And this is an example of that. The, the DP zone property east of the, uh, you know, where Isco sushi was at, at Crown Valley. It used to be, it was called Crown Valley Hardware, but it was never constructed. The hardware store itself, which I used to shop there, was, you know, was stored, contained with holes on its side. And a lot of outdoor storage of, of rock material and stuff. And, um, so here's the story of this. The county in nineteen ninety-one approved, it was zoned agricultural. So the county approved the DP zone change and a conditional use permit and a subdivision for the parcels underlying the property. This is in nineteen ninety-one. So just that you are, are aware of what a DP zone is, um, and it still is today. The, uh, at the time, we were under what was considered in nineteen eighty-six general value area plan and nineteen eighty-five county general plan, which allowed properties in ag zones and ag, properties with ag land use under the general plan to be zoned for commercial purposes for specific uses that hadn't been community serving. And under those circumstances, the county would approve a zone change to a commercial, if that's, you know, whatever it was. And to make sure that the development happened in accordance with the proposal, project that was proposed when the zone change happened, the county would overlay something called a DP zoning designation, which is a, uh, this DP standard for design program. It meant that, yes, you're gonna zone change, but you have to build what your promising development exchange for the zone change. And to make sure of that, you have to process a conditional use permit that proposes that project, right? So that.
And that didn't happen when it rolled back.
So I was gonna explain. So this DP zoning designation ordinance was adopted in nineteen eighty-five. And it stated categorically that if the developer didn't build the use, you know, never got the C U P or got the C U P and never built it, and the C U P expired, the county was, it said, shall initiate proceedings to revert the zoning back to the original, okay? So, um, and, and that is something that we, as a town council, have been aware of. In two thousand eight, um, we petitioned Regional Planning because there was a zone, a DP zone change that happened right there up at California Army Park for an archery, commercial archery project, and they never built it and nothing ever happened. They never, they didn't even get the C U P for it. So we petitioned the town, the county, and said, here's what the code says. They never did it, they never applied for extension, and it expired. So would you please revert the zoning? Because, you know, that's what the law said, right? So the county pretty good, Regional Planning adopted it, and the zoning was reverted. So it was me. What, uh, eight? Uh, two thousand eight, yes, I was just looking at email a few hours ago. And, um, so the town council just wrote a letter, and Regional Planning said, yes. Now, in two thousand twelve, the zone, zoning ordinance changed to say, to make it not mandatory that they had to revert it, but that they would consider, you know, if you asked them, the county, Regional Planning would have to consider it and decide what to do with it, okay? So, um, so that's, and that was ordinance, um, uh, two one dash oh oh one two. I just happily remember it in my place. I have it in there somewhere. Uh, well, I'm sorry, one two dash oh oh two one is what it is. But anyway, so, so that happened in twenty twelve. There's no big deal because we're, you know, it's fine. Um, so now, the deal with this property, that I didn't realize it was even a DP zoning zone a couple of months ago. Um, this was approved in nineteen ninety-one, the conditional use permit. Uh, condition said that this conditional use permit expires or runs with, co-terminates with the parcel map that was approved, right? Which is fine, which meant that when the map went final, then the C U P would never terminate. It would go on forever, okay? However, they never processed the final map, but I confirmed that in public works last meeting. So the tenant map expired more than thirty years ago. No final map, which means the C U P expired higher than thirty years ago, exactly. Um, so, um, um. Cover that. Um, the property has never been developed in accordance with any proposal or site plan, ever. Um, and in fact, the property has been now for almost ten years, used illegally for uses that are not even allowed on the property. Um, and I'm sure the property owners making a lot of money on that because they're renting the space out to Isco, the store outdoor, store, which is not in allowed use on commercial zoning. As I mentioned before, it's been the acting town council practice to request the county to revert the property to original zoning after more than a decade has passed. Without activity, particularly with the property owner, like when it violates the code, it shows no regard. So I wanted to, I have copies of their, I have what, tronic of the original C U P that's approved. I've marked you where it says what the expiration date, um, is. Yeah, so it says, the timeline of this reducing this grant shall be concurrent and consistent with those for parcel map nineteen ninety-sixty-eight. That did expire. I don't know what you all think about this, and I'm happy to answer questions, but that's the situation. You saw me, the pharmacy that's on there on that?
No, there's nothing. This is the one with the store and all the Isco equipment, the heavy equipment.
No, not there. Oh, that was the fencing?
Yes, they just have the.
Right, and then they were doing.
Now they're great.
But they created it in drainage area, it's terrible. And they, um, I mean, it's bad enough that they have industrial land use on it.
Yes.
But they're not even bothering to try to comply with the industrial land use. So I'm just complying, even without a, a requirement, even without a site plan. There's just way too many of the things popping up that these people are just doing this all illegally. Oh, yeah. There's just way too many of them.
And the property owner, I'm sure, knows that's not legal. A lot of industrial vehicles out there too is that, uh, it's, it is not fair. Everybody else is complying.
Complying.
To, to let some, somebody play or anything continue. Um, you know, it was, it was just junk storage for random, uh, yard ordinance that was for so long.
It was, yeah, weeks then.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's what the sign said. Maybe it's on the weeks, yeah.
So, so that, that, that was that, this is. And I'm sorry, that is, you know, essentially, essentially being dragged through acting. And it's terrible to have all this. Yeah, the formal. And, uh, if one thing I might throw my hands up, say, well, there's a formal, it's over, right? They have the right to do it. This is not, this is.
None of that.
This is none of that, which to me says all more reason, yeah.
And I know Regional Planning, in the emails that have gone back and forth, there's Ruthie to one, um, you know, start. And she's, you know, she's concerned about the industrial uses here. And, uh, you know, the Regional Planning is, is very concerned that they're not complying with their C U P. But their C U P expired thirty years ago, and Regional Planning doesn't even know it.
Well, this is a recurring.
There is no C U P.
That's the recurring problem of C U P. For me, the nexus is a different, uh, Dallas turn offs where expired C U Ps, like you just do it everywhere. Like, that's the message that I.
And what kills me is how they follow their law.
Yeah.
This one reverted there twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, well, certainly they reverted that twenty-five years ago.
Mandatory.
Yeah, well, and that's what I'm changing. Well, here's two, not the type directly, but to me, the core part of the issue is not following the rules with the C U P and not having C U P, and what all those are all that. Because both of these were dealt with through that lens, it solves all issues. Because comply, just comply. See, doesn't generally exist, just comply, or do what you're supposed to do. You're really, you're all like this, hey, uh, you wanna propose a use, and you wanna go through the whole process so you can store stuff there? Like, I'd say, like, I'd say this to my mind, but I'm saying, there's a process. You have to go through the process, just like any of us, have to go through the process for anything. And just because they're, somebody's slipped the wheel and just do what they're supposed to do with this. They don't get a twenty-five year period.
They know this though? Are they aware of it? Who's it?
Most homeowners are putting stuff on the property there.
Oh, yeah. Come on, it's Isco. Isco knows that it's industrial zone properties where it's allowed. Because they own industrial zone property. Isn't the one they were, kind of, mentioning to them, so they. Well, they know, they know. But Isco is. Now, hey, let me ask you, isn't it? If you were to have a piece of property that was zoned for agricultural, right? Would you put a bunch of, uh, of outdoor storage equipment on your property? Would you not know to enjoy some that that was not allowed under the code?
If I'm just a glinty member, I probably would know.
No, no, he's saying, no, Isco owns this same business on industrial zone property. Well, he knows the other property's not.
Issue of this, in fact, you probably don't know what that is, is allowing it.
It's making money on it.
Yes, it will, has presented it, you know, so, you know. I, I think Isco knows, but let's, let's, for the sake of discussion, say, they don't own anything at all for this business.
It's just like the illegal billboards, or those property owners are making money.
Oh, a lot of money, definitely, yeah.
Well, they're paying taxes though, right, from this one? I don't know. It's starting to help, they're aware.
Ask Chuck.
Do they pay taxes?
Sure.
They do taxes. It says, the owner of the property is a sophisticated business owner. He knows what he's got. He owns an industrial property elsewhere, right? So he knows the difference between industrial property and commercial property, of course.
Um, so, I, I mean, I think, uh, we started, I don't know if you started the letter. To that, that probably, and, and I thought it was too exhausting.
What do we want the letter to say, to Regional Planning, or are we gonna reach out to the property owner?
Uh, I think, I think both, I think if we send it to the property owner.
I think we're.
Or they reach out to the, uh, to Regional Planning, see.
We'll see what they say, okay? See what the property owner says, like, if they have any sense or, you know. Well, let me, okay, I'm sorry, what does it matter what he or she says? Because it doesn't make any difference.
Doesn't matter, even if you're innocent of it, you, this is, it needs to be dealt with.
Should, if they didn't know that they've been breaking the law for decades? Yeah, they would. So is that the same? Then it's just okay? It's okay then?
I, I disagree.
If they know. And they're gonna tell us they didn't.
Yeah.
That's right, that's what I said, yeah.
So, so I think, I think, I think it's up to you, what she said, and, and, and copied this.
So what do you, what do you think the letter should say? Yeah.
Uh, we're, why, is that what he wants to say? We're looking forward to this new rapid compliance in a, in a rapid fashion to restore it.
Well, but that's the problem, so that it can never be run again. The C U P is expired.
No, I'm saying the lights is, if it gets out there.
Oh, okay, well, that, absolutely, but, uh, yeah, so we should, okay, so we definitely, yeah, by the letter, by the. That's not even brought to you.
Correct, but I think, I think that this is the, you know, I think the, the moral pushing of that, because I think. If I was the homeowner in, in your vicinity, I think that they're gonna.
Let me make a statement about Isco. I mean, I've known David for a number of years, and the fact that David McComber runs his company that it's family members. I would guess that his two daughters are not aware. I mean, they might have been informed at some point, but they've only been involved for the last two years, as I remember. So.
What about that?
I have to. I think, I think it's been longer, but whatever.
Yeah.
So.
It was before COVID.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
They didn't put it there.
That's a complaint, yeah.
And David's like eighty-five, whatever, years.
Yeah, naturally.
Well, it doesn't matter, I just, I just. Yeah, I think, but all the more reason, I, I think that we oftentimes are giving people, giving direct advice on their own, the one is, I, I did see it often do that.
I can burn down.
Yeah, yeah, so, so my thing is, is what I was gonna say is, if I was a neighboring business owner, homeowner, I would wonder if there's a case because, uh, my property got burned down by somebody after something there. So I would be probably concerned if I was that business owner who owned that property, that there might be something there that somebody might know where. But I would think there'd be, been a case for, what, after somebody caused some harm?
Yeah, maybe.
I, I don't know.
Well, I, I think that we, we already have turned it over to Regional Planning for violation. And Regional Planning's response is, oh, yeah, they're not complying with the C U P, C U P. So Regional Planning isn't aware, but the C U P doesn't exist anymore. Well, what else is this one that we? So we need to talk.
Or I think, what else is that you contacted?
Well, this is actually Ruthie contacted, remember we had, this is like two or three meetings, four meetings ago. But we're talking about industrialists, and I said, we were talking about it, she, she brought it up, and she said she was going to reach out to Regional Planning. So when I say we, I don't mean we, I mean.
Oh, sure.
She's the chair, committee chair for that committee, and so, but on behalf of the town council, she contacted them. And where the status is right now is that, oh, yeah, they agree it's not complying with the C U P. But, you know, so I took quite a long time to look at the history of all this, and, you know, concluded that there is no C U P, so.
Brought to their attention.
Yeah, so, so, uh, I don't know if you're sending another letter saying that, okay, this is the deal.
Well, I, I think we highlighted that if our expectation, you know, if I run into the C U P, there is no C U P, essentially. And so we're looking forward to a rapid, uh, resolution with the, you know, we're gonna need them to revert it back to.
Exactly, well, that's, well, I agree with that, that's, that's the next step, so that's what, but then, okay. So, so what do you guys all think about regrouping design? That's it.
Some people I not like that, I think. Here's why I think we support it, is that that is what. Here's why I think we support it, is that that is what the rules are. And we started playing like, good rules, and we, we just see that as an opportunity for us to, the reason we make that case, my, my. My hand is that, if the rules are what the rules are, then everybody plays by the same rules, and then what happens? Because the rules are standardized, and everybody understands them, and that's the rules that we all operate under. And it doesn't preclude somebody from wanting to go, like, if they say, well, we want it like that. I'm not saying I wouldn't think that maybe somebody made a case for that, because we're happy. But sure as heck would say, yes, there are those rules there, like, I would never.
Well, so, but that's, that's the key with the DP, the only thing that can build them.
Yeah, is what they said.
Because the antique store and hardware store, we already have our. So that's, it's like, well, we, why, you know, why would we say?
But my point is, is that, yes, the DP, that, let's say they had to change them, so that we get back to any stack, right? And if somebody else says, hey, I want to put in, uh, a barbecue unit, and you're like, that sounds great. You know, it's something for the, hey, what, what mechanisms can we do? That's something I see, there could be support for it.
The D.
Correct. So, so I think that that's the case, which is why all more reason needs to roll back, and it needs to be established. So, ISCO wants to put something there? You bring the case of why we should skip a bunch of equipment there and get everybody convinced. And I mean, not just us, I say, everybody, how about the community? Not only the end of the community, it's like, yay, I want to go get some sushi, go get some sushi, stare at, uh, disco. And then just go play.
These are sushi.
I, yeah, it's sort of, I, I do the back.
You know what I told you about that, yes. Okay, so I kind of started this because you did, the, uh, write a letter to bring the property into compliance and address the CP issues? Well, so that's the thing, because there, well, I, I, that's why I didn't know where people wanted to go, but I don't know that we didn't say it, because CP issues.
Yes, there is no CP issue.
There is a CP.
What about that, is a CP?
The non, or the non, there's no, the non CP. Yes, there's no, there should be no use on that property. So, the non CP.
Right.
Um, and, and zoning. And revert zoning, and revert. So I had, I had drafted a motion, but I didn't know what instructions to go with, and it's only partial, so I need to change it a lot. But I said, I moved it via regional planning to revert the CP zoning on parcels, lots, 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 back to agricultural. I, I, I'm on here also, and I'm ready, asked the RP to recognize that CP is expired, that there is no CP.
None?
So you don't have to worry about it. Thank you. Well, I don't, I don't, I won't dangle my possible.
Oh, Carlos on there.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I moved it, we asked regional planning to recognize that the CPs expire, that there is no CP to comply with. And to revert the DP zoning on parcels, CP parcels, back to agricultural zone. Okay, for a second then.
Good, second. Any other discussion?
No.
Right. All different, we're fine on.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, both.
My whole thing, I'll say one thing, right, is, I just feel like we have just had so many issues with things just like this. Billboards, it'll be, you know, all over the line. It would be really nice to actually literally put something together that states everything that it is. We need to write letters about it, all those letters together, and put out, I mean, it doesn't have to be long, you know, really. Wait, well, there might be two pages of this, something. This, this letter, it's all, like, you know, and put it all together and say, this is what we're. Right. Because it's big, it's huge, when you look at it in the huge picture.
Well, it's huge, it's, it's something that shouldn't be a big deal. All we're asking for is compliance to, like, the rules.
That's it.
Is there, I'm asking you, okay, what are you, I'm saying, we're not asking for new things to be created. I'm asking for, like, do interpretation, and I'm just like, just, what does it say? Like, what's the plain language that says, we need to shut off? You're not, like, you, there's no.
And this community supported this zone change, just basically, the plan that was written at that time, okay, it's not.
Did I say something? You have to look at, you have to ensure.
No, it makes sense.
And, uh, this reading is not from me, it's from the community, they asked me all these questions, and what are we doing about it? I'm kind of shocked, I said, why, you can come to the meetings, is what my first thing was saying. But they want there all the time, like, the town council, they make regional issues that they're concerned with. I thought, I said, well, we are working on it for one thing, right?
Yeah.
It's not like, I said, it's not like you're going to have one or two issues to deal with. Like you said, there's a whole page or two pages of it.
Yeah, well, and I would have heard some people.
Understand.
Yeah, well, I would have heard those people come out, like, we, yeah, we're not, we're not.
And they can, and call ahead, and, oh, if they want to process it, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and again, we need the community, we are a piece of the community, we are the entire community. So we need people, if they care about these issues.
They do.
Then they should be here.
Questioning people.
Well, you talk, you talk up here and they question you.
How would it be on the council?
Yes.
Yeah.
They could just be on.
Yeah, I hear, I hear things about that being on the council too. I'm, I'm, oh, that's a good, that's a good, I love your people.
Yeah.
Well, but, see, that's, you know, that's why I said, you know, we need people.
Yeah, well, if they said, this is very easy for people to comply.
But you could just write a newspaper, follow, act, and town council, all of us, town council, and that's just, you know, stuff.
You think, okay.
Carl, Carl, you're here, we can go back, if you have anything to tell, to us or share with us.
He's smiling.
Um, I got, I got stuff to share, but I, I don't know if it matches whatever you guys are talking about.
It's okay.
It, it's kind of like making a soup, let's put it in the pot and see if it stirs.
Does that work?
All right, uh, I, I bought a legis, legislative report this week, something different, right?
Sounds good.
Yeah, we, the Assembly is in the middle, well, all of Sacramento is in the middle of, uh, a legislative session that's going to end very soon. And the pressure is on to pass the budget, to pass all these bills, thousands some bills that they, uh, proposed. And they're getting widowed down, and I just wanted to let everybody know, we still got Assemblyman Lackey's very interested in helping pass. They are mostly, uh, public safety and, and veterans, that's our focus. Uh, one that is, from the Assembly that is now in the Senate committees, it's AB forty-six, which makes a personal tax exemption on retirement benefits for serving members and past retirees of the armed forces. So that's, considering how many vets we have in the Antelope Valley, and inactive, that could be pretty good. Uh, another one is to do a property tax exemption for a hundred percent disabled vets. That's SB seven-two-six, and it's being heard in Assembly committees, that's where the Assemblyman Lackey is at. Uh, it benefits disabled vet homeowners whose homes are valued under, uh, a median threshold of, I think it's like eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. Which, in modern days, that's a median house now. Uh, the other bill that's still cooking along and hopefully will pass is SB fourteen-oh-one. Assemblyman likes it because it exempts family daycare licensing and regulations for facilities that are administered by military family members. That means that if you're at, uh, Edwards Air Force Base, or Plant Forty-two, or maybe China Lake, you could start your own daycare inside the base. And it will be exempt from most of the state regulations. Uh, bills that were passed by the, passed and were signed by the governor is, uh, AB sixteen-oh-five. It requires schools, that's all high schools, that provide access to future employers from denying access to armed forces employers, especially the Space Force. That means that if you're open to hiring people from Northrop, and you're allowing people to come in and talk about careers at Northrop, at, uh, Caltrans, wherever. You go, you have to admit armed forces recruiters. Uh, the other one that's pretty good is, uh, is a bill called AB's eight-eight-three, it's nicknamed Skill Bridge. And it assists active duty members and discharged vets obtaining business and professional licenses. And remember, those two last bills have passed and were signed.
Do you, do you have any update on SB fifty-three?
I do on the other, I do on the other page, hold on. SB fifty-three?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no, I got some, I got another one, that's all right. You got messed up, SB fifty-three.
That's Portatino's, uh, parting gift to Second Amendment folks in California.
Is that the one that was written by Portatino?
Yes, it, it required.
It was withdrawn.
Yeah, they retired.
Yeah, it was, it was taken off the calendar and what, and it's not under consideration. There's other stuff, but, um, that one, like, that's the one that had the licensing and annual registration, that kind of stuff.
No, this is the requiring a gun safe to be a part of every firearm purchase.
SB fifty-three, no, I'm.
And you would have.
I think it's still, it's still in committee. You know, if I can, I will look it up in the next couple of minutes, and I'll, and if I can, I'll sneak back some time.
Appreciate it, it, it's, uh, but yeah, basically, you know, it has to be, it's a, you have a handgun, you have a safe for handgun. You have to have a D O A, uh, certified, that would support a gun you are purchasing, or what do you call purchases, say.
Yeah.
Have a proof of receipt? But someone gives it to you.
You guys have a proof of receipt, it's all about the text, and I, it's, it's crazy. So, it was, yeah, he was a good event. Yeah, it was originally, it originally started as a California phone commission, uh, credit, and since we ran out of money, they said, oh, we'll do this. Anyway, so, okay, thank you, sir.
All right, welcome, thank you.
Hey, you know what, I'm, get, Carla?
Yes?
I, I have, I spent an hour on the phone today. I was trying to reach a, somebody at the Emergency Services Authority, the people who license, um, ambulances and EMTs. Uh, and because a law was passed last year saying that they had to post by March one of this year, they had to post the maximum allowed charge where an ambulance can charge a person for every county. And, uh, that, that information was posted on their website. So I started, I must have made seventeen phone calls, I called every department in this agency, and not one person answered their phone. Half, half of them, um, their mailboxes were full. The other half, even half of the mailboxes sat. And, um, my son just hit his shoulder last fall, and so he didn't call me first, but called ambulance. So I had a five-thousand-dollar ambulance go for a two-mile ride. They put an E and M, they gave him two-hundred-and-fifty dollars worth of Tylenol, that's almost two blows. And so now, I'm struggling to figure out why. So, I, I, I just, I, you know, I think, I made a lot of calls to government agencies, not just for the town council, but also for my business, right? And also. And I have found over the last year that I can't get through to anybody, ever. Somebody finally did call me back this afternoon, and she said, well, we don't have to comply with that because of the governor's budget. And so apparently, there's some bill that was passed in December saying, or maybe Newsom said, nobody has to comply with anything that, that requires you to do something because the budget's messed up, so after when you approve the budget, then you have to comply. So, that's why the information isn't there, but, um, it, it's really challenging when you can't even get ahold of anybody. And to talk to them about, hey, this is a requirement you're supposed to comply with, but where is it, you know? It's like ridiculous, so, what, what am I supposed to do? I guess I could call Assemblyman Lackey or Senator Wilk, but, you know, then it's just, and I know you guys answer the phone.
Yeah, that's, but I was good, I was thinking, I gave it a buzz.
But can you guys pass on laws that the state agencies have to have a phone person? Somebody answer their phone, just a general number, I couldn't even get to the P U C to that, it was amazing.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, geez.
I thought, I know, it must be Juneeenth, and I'm like, no, that's the last day.
Monday.
What? It's early.
No, no, I didn't, I couldn't do it anyway, I just, I guess I'm venting, but also, you know, the, the, the state agencies don't, they don't, they don't answer their phone.
Yeah.
And if you send an email, you're, first of all, you don't even know who to send an email, you have to talk to somebody and find their email address.
And then they, they read it.
Yeah. It's just, it's really, the state, the state is not running well at all. Just bad.
You know, and recently, Jackie, I've noticed a lot of insurance companies now, oh, trying to sell you a policy for an ambulance ride.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, okay, so, this, this, these legislatures are very good then. I will give you guys big profits, and Governor Newsom signed it. As of Jan, any health plan, any, you know, we renew our health plans every year, right? As of any plan written down or after January one, they cannot charge you, they have to charge you whatever this maximum rate is that's posted on their post office, that's posted on their website. It's just posted there. So if, if an ambulance does what they've done to me, and charges five thousand dollars, which is what it's supposed to cost fifteen hundred, that's not allowed under the law you guys passed. But I can't even, I can't have that conversation with them, it's like, if I know what the maximum rate is, which is not posted, it's like. So, so I would, I would never buy it, if you have an insurance policy, an insurance policy, they come and act usually as what they call reasonable customizing, and that's what this lady is supposed to do now. So. I just like, can't make this stuff up. That's terrible.
I'm gonna watch it, I can't see.
Okay, I love myself, that's all I'm gonna say.
Yes, what you watched.
Couldn't you Uber for like eight bucks?
Exactly.
Yeah, there you go. He didn't know, and that's my fault, I didn't tell him, I never.
This is a big regard, uh, may just look at your shoulders and that's it.
I said, I said, never call ambulance unless there's a sucking chest wound or no call. And that's great.
It was crazy. All right, that's what you'd be able to call. California, nice to meet you.
Okay, this is what I spent most of my time on, so, okay. About half the comments that were submitted on the E I R, the draft E I R, actually made the last.
Wow.
So.
I don't know.
Well, it means we put a lot of volume to it.
I know, but what I'm saying was, like, it's like, I was, I was hoping for so many that it would be.
No, they're not that many.
Yeah, that's.
And some of our comments are in there twice. And, and because of, then I'll share with you the following responses, and they provided us about our comment on some of the issues. Okay, first of all, it acknowledges, this is their comments, they have all, Volume Four is devoted to comments up in the. It acknowledges that our concerns, the drainage patterns must be preserved and unchanged, protect existing developments, and it acknowledges that they were great. I've never seen that, we agreed.
They never agreed.
I know. And it thinks explicitly that she's very appreciative of this comment, and that three specific mitigation measures were designed for success to ensure existing, uh, stormwater patterns are maintained. So, the way this works, like, in an E I R, for an accident, giving legal advice or perspective, but as an environmental engineer and my experience with C plan. The best you can hope for in an environmental document is that they hear your concerns, they identify the mitigation measures, and they say that will address your concerns. And that almost never happens, mostly it's just, well, we consider that we've addressed it, and so we have to say it. So, on the other hand, this is like pretty remarkable, I, I, it is remarkable. Yeah. So, and the reason it's important is because when the project finally happens, and they cause erosion and make houses get washed out. You can go back and you can say, these mitigation measures were supposed to prevent this, and they will lay the standup to get your house. They could lay the stand out to get your house rebuilt or get rememoration for the damage they've done to it. So this is pretty strong, in my opinion, as an environmental engineer. Okay, now, it also, interestingly, it acknowledged that the project would cause the level of service traffic at the intersection of Crown Valley Road and Ano Kus Road to draw to an F. Wow. To expect, we, we put that in the records, we put copies of, uh, traffic studies and stuff to show them, but they said, yep, that's the truth. And then they said that this, and they said that this could be mitigated by implementing measures that would restrict construction activities to avoid drop-off and pickup times in schools, which is what, something we recommended. It was not a preferred recommendation, but we asked them, we considered putting a temporary on the 14th, but they're, that, they're saying this, now, here's the downside, okay? They also indicated that they could install traffic signals that unsignalize. I remember that would be a problem for, we never, I never expected them to say that, so we didn't. When, when you write comments, you try to imagine everything they're gonna say and, and play ten moves ahead of them in three dimensional chess, right? I didn't expect that, right? Um, because that is a whole lot of stuff you have to do, especially that intersection, because they have to get permission from Caltrans. So, this, it's within 100 feet of the freeway. So, um, anyway, so if we write them a letter, we should probably talk about that and explain why that's, okay?
So the guy that was in that class. Like, F was on, we think I remember it.
It certainly, yeah, minus plus. Um, and these are all our. So, the issue about the drainage is on page, uh, chapter 22, page 242. Issue about the traffic is on page 31110, if you're interested. Now, regarding noise, it points out that the 24-hour noise averaging methodology used is almost universally accepted as the best way to measure human response to environmental noise changes. They didn't just, I couldn't find any place where they disputed a statement saying, you do 24-hour assessment, you're not complying with C Corps, C Corps requires you to assess the noise impact at the time of location that it occurs, you can't average it over 24 hours. So they didn't touch that further out, but, um. Nobody's, I'm sorry, I'm like that, but, um, any, anyway. But they did point out that there was a type of E I R, and that the projected training scheduled through Act is much more, and only 217 trains a day. 400 something, yeah.
Oh, right, this one better.
But, on the other hand, the E I R's preferred alternative is still the fully underground Act, so if it go that way, then I, you know, I'm gonna shine that on. Okay, the E I R also acknowledged our concerns that four routes with significantly impacted one ranch, and, and they admitted, I didn't know this either, that the State's Star, uh, State's Star Preservation Act, uh, ship out. I'll, I'll still agree with that, so that's. Yeah, that's on page 357. However, like the noise impacts, the E I R's preferred alternative is underground, so we should, so we should shine that on too. Finally, the E I R states that the project does not anticipate using local groundwater to supply water for the T V operations, that's the tunnel boring machines. Well, yes, so let me, let me get into the more information. So what they say is that the water will be obtained from commercial sources in Palmdale, Santa Clarita, Burbank, Los Angeles, and other areas, on page 221. Chapter 17 states that wells will not be drilled. So, remember, they had their utility lines ending there at Santa Clarita, they're new lines, and like, well. A V E C is the other direction, right? Anyway, so, they confirmed they will not be drilling wells, and that instead, water will be obtained from either A V E C or District 40, over water recycling facilities. They do not mention District 37.
Yeah.
No, so, uh, however, another page, that's on pages 61 to 67. Um, it does state that, though, that, that Chiswery will not direct, that though Chiswery will not directly use groundwater, it will indirectly use groundwater by using water from a total of water suppliers, and takes parts of its suppliers from the ground line. So that is how it can broken District 37. In this case, the water would be used in a manner that is consistent with their policies, so in this case, water resources are set policies. So the matter falls back, now, again, Water Works District 37, who has persistently refused to engage with us on this matter, over and over.
But here's the question, they ignore us. Couldn't they, let's say, they broke a plan, they said, we will buy your groundwater?
No. Because they said that, 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 that the commercial suppliers are.
Okay, so this is because they named them, okay.
Yeah.
All right, making sure.
Well, they could, so we should make sure.
Cool, that, that would be something, I would, I would, I would, I would, like, they're right.
Because they are commercial operators.
And I'm, 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 my concern is thinking like, well, yeah, you can. Well, I'm going to, hey, for the next two years, three years, I don't know how long, you can tell me this kind of thing. Well, buy every little water that you can have. Right, and you're like, wait a minute, now you, we're, our town, your position. Exactly, what they, I'm just saying, they look around, they're like, who's the water hall, I'm picking water. Exactly. And even one load is gonna be impacted, they're so tight on the liquidity. I know, it's like, water bill.
Right, exactly.
And it's like, I'm searching weeks out, because it's like, open on.
Or to get it done. So that's actually a really good point. Now, I will say this, however, the only way they could do that is if they actually use the haul trucks, because if they were to try to then county would have to approve that, and county might approve it, but we would at least have a say, and so we could be, you know, ignoring that actually. Yes, but, um.
No, just something, I think, this word's calling out this lawyer. Yeah, I mean, I, I can't, I don't know. It's a big concern, it's all about water.
Yep. And we're, you know, it's not fair to, frankly, those betray us, because we're, we're ripening about how much water there is, right? And to not be the same thing with High School Drive. But, I'm actually, you know, I, I'm always going to, I'm, I'm always gonna step up and say, you know, this agency has done a really good job, and I, I believe they have, I, I, I can't, I, I only when I talk with people in the military, um, because I do work with, record in the Army, Army Air Force, have I had a government agency who'd been this responsive to concerns. I mean, pages and pages in our comments, and they got a little snarky, they said, you use the wrong number of trains per day, and then they, two lines down, there was a typo. I'm sure, yeah, whatever. Um, and, and they, they just agree with, you know, our factor is considered hard, or noise, noise, whatever, but, you know, that's just professional, you know. Spitting on each other, right? But I, I'm, you know, I'm actually kind of impressed with this High School, I, 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 I just say, well, I feel like the water, um, and a lot of the issues that I recall, residents having, with, is it gonna affect my well, is it gonna, you know, water in our community, those things, those things to me were some of the biggest issues. Right. That, you know, that, even though there were a lot of other big issues, those were the things that the residents need to.
Yeah, well, understandable, this is sensitive.
Yeah, it's real, and, and, yeah, and, 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 I, it might, you know, it might affect wells. There's just, but, but, the, um, by having it, driving it underground, it's less likely to affect wells, because it's gonna be, it would be deeper than it would have been when there were the cars, you know, right? Cause they surface and take out all the wells of East Valley, come across. Because all of it, you know, where it is now, is me, a lot of it, places that are in Water Works District 37, that don't have us, and not, you know. It's completely out of Shannon Valley, which before is gonna be close to Grover, or over there at whatever, Ward Road, and East Val, that's gonna boil.
And I, I just think, this school, like, just how much noise they made all in that quarter. Oh, 27 trains, it would be possible, but, but, talk about like, just close to school, because like, at that point, it would be.
Close, uh, road school?
Yeah, there's a nice school, and. Yeah, 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 they just would have been. And so, to me, it's only for that. And I, I, I want to, I'm excited about the I G B, but, all the options given us, this is great.
Yeah, they, I, I believe they listen, I don't know how much of our comments made the difference, but I believe that they made some difference. So that's what I had.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, exactly. Well, I recommend everybody just take the train to San Francisco from Palmdale to Burbank. And jump across under the bay. But I, I will say this, so if, if anybody says, uh, you know, it is, they cannot enter the tunnels at. They can, they never go under, they, like, Garlar Hall, all this. Always left.
So that way you can shoot off into the air.
Yeah, exactly.
And they, they still, they're, you know.
You know, I think they, they, they'll just do it the way they're going through it. I know, but that, people keep saying, oh, they, they, we can't do it, I'm like, we can. Might pull the train down a little bit, but, just, so like, just, you know, from here, from here to Burbank.
Yeah.
Their, their ideal max slope is 2%. Well, guess what it is, we're doing here in Burbank, it is exactly 2%. So there's nothing that, there was no big lift for them to get in Palmdale, Burbank, and the same things that we do there. They can just go up and down, you know, because it, it, I don't think, I, I, I'm not as worried about.
No, no, I'm scared, I mean.
I, I.
I know, but you listen to your life. On the, yeah.
So that's what I always said, they were not building it for us.
I don't.
I know, that's what they're actually building for, because it's perhaps, it's gonna be obvious. They're still like, for kids that are not gonna know.
Kids that aren't born yet.
And they're not gonna know any.
Yes, thank you so much for taking the time.
Oh, you're welcome.
I haven't been able to look at it at all, but.
By the way, there's copies, that's the executive summary, there are, um, hard copies, and thumb drives, the whole E I R, and I know Jim's down here too.
I don't have a flash drive, they didn't give you any.
Take, yeah. Read thumb drives for Sam.
I spent a tremendous amount of time watching those comments, so I'm really pleased that they addressed us.
Yeah, they, they.
You guys did a fantastic job of getting out your, at school, and you, you, you showed them, and and, to where we're at, this is, wasn't something that just, they just kept, yeah, just ready, everybody's, no, you guys' hard thought to do that, even in the conversation.
Oh, that's a long, long.
Long, but, yeah, we're, 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 that's a.
Actually, 97. I can't, I'm still living in Berkeley.
I can't believe the amount of live hours that we've put into this, and when I say we, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the things that we've done, we got the, the CEO down here to take a tour with us.
Yeah, he sat by little Kia.
Stunned our feet a little bit. So they know us.
Yes, they do.
And they, and they did listen.
Well, I think, so the board is meeting on June 26, at the Burbank Airport. I think we need to write a letter to, or, well, I, I'm sure we're gonna thank them for this project.
Gratitude for, for their involvement in the.
Because we're supposed to represent the community's perspective, and nobody, except for one person in this community, uh, two people have come up and said they're in support of High School Drive. Those two people did, and so we can't say none, but except for those two people, so we can't. We've always said, don't put it here, but if I'm gonna put it here, our. I, these are both gone. I think they moved out. I was here for, when, when, June, when, when, June? June 26. So I, I have a couple of potential motions. One of them is I agree with this, but a comment that are expressing appreciation for their listening, for the 40 S R 14 A route, which, by the way, that is their preferred alternative still, double check that. Our opposition, the construction of traffic signals, and our understanding of the mitigation measures that will be implemented to protect natural drainage patterns of local groundwater resources. That, for your draft motion. Okay, second.
All right, from second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Do you think, while we're through here, uh, do you think that, that's trying to blind, uh, either of you? About the local groundwater resources, are you taking, taking, about the water?
Right, yeah, exactly.
It's as long as.
Our, our understanding, and so, one of our understandings would be that you would not go to commercial water towers for. Yeah, no, water iron, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I wanted to say, because, they, that might be misconstrued, because I know our water towers serve other areas, and potentially San, and I know they go out to, you know, areas, and they go, I'll, so I, I, you know, I just think, say, commercial water towers, pure, like, fair enough, so.
Okay, any other discussion on that? All favor?
I, I. And then I have another motion, if possible, to see this, I don't feel like I can. But I move that if anyone is available for the ten that Chiswery meeting on June 26, which is next week, and speak up, we have the town council, but they should be authorized to do so. They said. Go down, yeah, I'm flying out that end. Oh, man, where are you going now, Burbank? Well, that is news. That, yeah, well, come early, the top. Oh, shoot. So, fair enough. I think my, absolutely, I did what you're talking. Well, I thought I'd be right there.
No, I can't, yeah, yeah. Anyway.
Well, I was gonna just speak, and we have another organization. Yo, maybe I could, maybe I'll, two comments, one, 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 four, one, one.
There is a chance, because, so, so that's actually.
Happy birthday.
Probably not, but one day, so, perhaps, I think, I think.
Okay, so, next one, motion.
Okay, we have a second?
Okay, that's second.
Okay, wait a second. Another discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Oh.
So it's at, agenda two at 9:00 A.M.
Oh, 9:00 A.M.
Yes. But at least it's not over to LA, yeah. Um, another thing is that this is gonna get bounced back to Water Works District 37 again, because this is where it says, right? So I think we need to, now that we have it firmly stated in the E I R that it's on the back of Water Works District 37 to, uh, to address the concern that we have, uh, using, uh, not, because, because whether it's from A V E C or groundwater, it's coming via 37, if it's coming here into Act, not those things. So, again, we engage 37 on making sure that they don't, it's, it's.
Well, I, I think this is good, then, then we can, for example, and we, we're both having a good conversation about this, like, this is like, here's what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
So, so that's in the white and white.
They've said, Sean, your policies, now, tell us what your policies are, yeah. So, on that note, I do want, I have been talking with, as a, as a private citizen, Public Works, in particular, Adam Ariki's staff, and, um, uh, oh gosh, I'm, I'm blanking on your, Cara, Cara Vina, so, head of Water Works District 37, and Matt Frary, who is, you know, in charge of implementing the water plan, and also, I think, saving measure W, um, with a lot of concerns with the water line. And, and I have been given certain assurances by Public Works on, on the concerns that we had toward the water line, because the discussion, there was a, a possibility of litigation coming up over the water line. So, I, um, we, I had some good communications back and forth with them. And so I think it would be good, and this is just me as a private citizen, but I think it would be really good if the Act of Town Council got, got engaged in these conversations, and this could be, like you said, the entree for that, but also the bigger issues, because we've talked about it a long time, with this pipeline going out of District 37, the R T T project, which in their presentation, they're gonna. the RTG project, which in their presentation, they're gonna have golf course, they're gonna have two homes per parcel, they're gonna have a church and a monastery, they're gonna have a whole new grocery store that's going to be enacted, and a whole big, like, launch to serve that subdivision, right there near, 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 exactly.
Right, 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 you should do that.
Yeah, that's their plan, boy. Yep, so to put these grocery stores and launch or something to serve them, and anyway, so, you know.
It looked like a whole shopping center, Jackie, I mean, from what I, what I saw, when you, I.
Yeah, yeah, the pictures were not, it was, it flashed up fast.
Yeah, and then I asked a couple of questions after, and it was a whole lot more than story, the golf courses were, will be a, like.
Yeah.
That might be a water runner, water pool.
They're, 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 the, um, the recycling plant they're putting in, only as we were producing, it doesn't count today, which is not going to be even enough, the water plant's bigger than there, and if it's not, they just want, and that's not, they just want.
Pictures, first, that's what, that they're turning off until, since we're out of most of the council, you know, the, if you're not.
Right, although this, that was two years ago, this presentation, they're going over that. That's why they need the golf course and the grocery store.
And they need community, and they need church.
You know, the community, it looks like. Yep, so, okay, if I had a thousand, thousands of, and I, I, I've asked this several times, it's like, hey, so you, they're all trails, they're equestrian trails, but it's a gated community, so how does that happen?
Yeah, that's a worry.
You can't, there's no house, there's no dogs.
Eight thousand square foot houses now.
Oh, wow. And that's the main house, so forget the ABU.
Yeah.
Can't be, but it's completely updated.
It could be a decent sized home.
Yeah.
Anyway.
We're in my, my.
Yeah, my part is empty.
Interesting meeting that we attended. And they, and they do want to come to our meeting.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Uh, along the, uh, project manager.
We, I would be happy to, if they would call the project.
If they would.
They call the project.
And if I'm okay checking, I'll hold with you, okay? Check your credit line.
I'm on my, I'm on my.
My, yes.
I don't know, I'm, I'm. Oh, I think people are talking. Yeah, that's, sorry, say it again. Okay, so this was, we talked about it last time.
Yes, you could.
Yeah, so it's just that there's a. So this is a property, the end of Mellow Hills Road, that has, it's been stripped there, and has a, had an RV on it, and people living there, and a couple of dogs, and they attacked it, attacked the residence dog, and it's horrible. And then they let that dog run wild and got another dog. Um, and so then they have submitted a site plan to grant goats on the property. And so, you know, we don't often comment on site plans, right, but we did, it did come across intergub. And the problem is that there shouldn't be any site plan approved for any use, and so the violations are fixed. And the violation, one of the violations, that they stripped the property completely of all vegetation, and put a bunch of asphalt in it. So, I mean, they're supposed to get an MCP for revegetation. And so, um, we, we didn't have the warrant, but this we want to, what we wanna do. I don't have a motion, I don't know what people wanna do, and again, we don't normally comment on site plans, but, like, with the sign thing, we're confident, because this is wrong, with same things here, they shouldn't approve the site plan until all the violations are fixed, including the MCP, not only applicable, but completed and approved, and the vegetation put back in place, then you do your site plan, you know? Or you, the site plan is partly an CUP, so, I don't know what you're like, yeah.
Any idea where they got that asphalt?
It looks like.
All that asphalt, where they cross the road.
Oh, I get real, Zach.
Okay.
It looked like, um, you know, not crushed asphalt that sometimes you put on their roads, like, there's stuff they had that on Seaford. That looked like fresh, white, black asphalt, to me, but, I don't know, right? Yeah, I have no idea where it came from. And they need to remove it, oh, you know, like.
So it wasn't the grindings, I haven't been over there, so it wasn't the grindings that we experienced this last year, it was actually new.
It looked like asphalt, it looked like, it was black, like, it was black. You know, grindings sometimes look grayish.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, which is fine, but, this looked pretty black to me, but, you know, I can't get on the property, so.
Yeah.
And I'm driving, free, wasn't I? Well, I don't know what you guys think, if there's anything you wanna write a letter or.
Is there such a thing as a goat permit? I didn't know that, I mean, I've heard that.
So, I'll be honest, I, I don't see how they, it's, it's, like, accessory, so, like, I don't see how they should do that without.
Somebody being.
A resident.
Well, I would agree, except for, I mean, and, sure, sure, the primary, correct.
Animals aren't there. I, I don't know how it looks like asphalt, so, like, it's kinda weird, but, uh.
Well, it's like. Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree, and I would think.
Um, just, so here's my back thought, maybe, um. Wild conjecture, remember, is that I wonder if you say they're gonna go with this, by the goat, you know, that the shepherds are, are there, my extension piece.
Okay, so that's not incorrect, that.
Because that's why, that, that's why I'm like, I think it's, it's too weird about their quest. So, there, there's something, there's something else there.
We thought, how smart of. My wife, when I thought there was a military, it was crazy.
It just isn't smart, it's like, you would just, you go outside, you say, I'm gonna go outside.
They all got the, the.
No, but if I have a goat, they're also like, oh, I'm shepherd, I need to be here to watch my goats, so, it's a job. Whatever, whatever weird thing they're gonna spin on it, that's what it is.
I'm, I'm sure.
Which is why I'm like, I think we write a letter, and, and we address the whole overarching, that means it's a good, it should really solve the problem.
Yeah.
It's a camp out, this is also a significant.
It makes sense, I'm pretty.
I also look up the fence, and it doesn't appear to, you know.
Yeah, isn't, isn't it, uh, chain link, or is it?
No, it's not, it's rock iron.
They have, they have some violations already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, ANOV.
We were told they put ANOV on, but that doesn't count, they might think, well, this, approving the site plan fixes the ANOV. But it doesn't, because they still have to give you an CUP.
But they can't. So, so I think, let me make that, it should be, I'm pretty.
Ask that to the site. Well, and that, and, and that's what the code says, you will not accept an application for any property when there's a violation, unless the director expressly gives permission.
I guess, so you're not wanting to permit this, right?
Right.
Like, so that's how, I think, I think something like that, of like, I think that, that's just my personal take, is, is opposed to say, hey, like, are you thinking of a, or, or any other kind of, it's like, more just like, this is what this says, this is how we understand it. Do you understand it that way, in which case, this shouldn't, you should be, art, talk it like, go back to, no, you're not paying $200, so. So you're in NOV, you stack it in NOV, solve those, then you go back with the dollar.
Okay, so let me. Okay, so I'm not gonna.
Type it out.
Yeah, 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 right.
And if I don't write it, why would it let me be?
That's just it.
So I'm just gonna have this motion, I move to write a letter that post-site plan should be approved to violate specifics, including vegetation, we can go back. It's good.
It also factors in what's involved here.
I'm saying that, no site. Yeah, you're right, I love this, yeah. See a little, yeah, a back in there, and I'll give it.
Do we have a second? Okay, second, if you would, John, you, and I, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion's here. All right. Some, grab a question, you need to go on to the W. If you want to be chatting live.
Yeah, so I, I was just wondering if there was, I don't think we've gotten any email, people commenting on.
I, I did talk to some folks that are around, sitting out there.
Oh, you did, okay.
And, and, and were aligned with, have what we thought. With, with.
Well, they sure. Yeah, because I feel like we need to get back to.
I hope, I'm like.
Why? They want to check the stop sign.
Yeah. The residents who live, see, I don't know who I talked to. Took their different, uh, orange, uh, both the first that they, that was, facility recent, that is, that is, that is.
A thirty long foot lawn, but I feel like we need to get them an answer, I, I, I didn't see, and I might have missed it, an email coming in with their, they were gonna give us a.
I thought they said that they were needing, they, they didn't have anything.
But now they're gonna give us a picture. Yeah, they were going.
Yeah, I, I thought they said, I thought, I could be wrong, I thought I saw something come in that's in the form of, like, they're sure.
Oh, okay, and that's, okay, then, then maybe we should, we should wait till we get that.
Uh, while we, maybe we, people motion, but they pending that has been received, in other words, they, they did set an action. And, and, and we, if you're watching, like, like, some of these are.
So what, what do you want the motion to say, I don't have any thoughts on it, because I don't live there, so I feel, I think the whole thing, I didn't. There are, some people think it's gonna slow traffic down, there are some people think, I want, it's gonna cause accidents, that's.
Well, they're.
Curb, and they're, or, or, or nine highways start supporting.
Couple of the other things that were brought up, were those, um, called cones, you know, that can be.
Right.
Pile lines, whatever, and then also the chatterbox, you know, coming up to it.
Yeah.
You know, or, or whatever, because you're going downhill.
Yeah.
You know, you understand why people are going too fast when they come slow down, and then you go right through the stop sign.
I think it might be harder to get around that huge concrete, um, and I think we're gonna see, people giving that, or, I'm not sure.
That, that was, that was kind of the, the thing, that was the question.
Like the residents there?
That, that like, I was gonna, you know, I'm trying to turn, or, you know, people, the way people are like, you know, we're gonna have people not know it's there. Because they have like, whatever, they're going to hit, uh, and, you know, those roles, it's like, yeah, you're gonna have like, flipping car stops instead of just. So, um, yeah.
There's so many people that go through that already without.
Stop. Without, yeah.
It sounds though like we won't get a flashing stop sign without.
Let me put it this way, uh, both expressed some emotions, but I think it really, that was like, I'd rather not do anything.
Well, okay.
So, there's that, which was like, forget it, and it, it, that, like, hey, I would, we like the idea, but it, it, it all sorts of. So that's the only feedback I was, I'm, I'm not holding her alive, enough that I can be, I won't think of the, 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 but.
The other thing we talked about was maybe a, a equestrian thing, right?
Yeah.
But we did say that about that, so. I know, I'm a little bit. Question.
And they seem to agree with that.
And honestly, Kerry, there's not as many people up in some DPO states that have horses anymore. I kinda drove through.
I know a couple.
Yes, there's, there's two, but there, there used to be a lot.
A lot.
There's a lot of people with toys.
Yes.
And, and, and. Trainers for, for dogs.
Yeah, yeah, well, there was a guy here, the last one, specifically.
Oh, specifically, he did.
Well, and I, actually, I, yeah, I would, if I, if I do a, my top, two brushings, I'd, I'd, both.
That sign going up there. Okay, so, you know, I guess, I kinda feel like maybe we shouldn't really wait till we get something. What, you want, you wanted to interrupt the air?
Well, I was thinking, let's just, let's, let's prove it in the.
So approve a comment letter.
Yeah, and that, and that way, if, if they have it sent, okay, no problem, we just hold it. Then we're gonna have like, uh. Come back, I don't know, is it, I, I, I'm just trying to avoid like, a situation where, hey, they did reply, and hey, now we're running over.
Right, and away, another meeting, yeah. So, uh, we can write a comment letter on the post configuration, and we wanted to say, yeah, on the slap down things, and yes, on the equestrian side, but no on the curb?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Can you say slap down things?
What are they saying?
The liniers.
The liniers, thank you, slap down things.
I like slapping, I like a lot. Those guys enacted, out there, hey, we call, make a slap down thing.
Okay.
I just, like I said, I'm just trying to avoid like, this, this.
Yeah, okay, so I hope you write a comment letter on the post configuration, yes, to the liniers, and equestrian signs, no to curb slash island, if.
That, I might.
Pending.
Yeah.
Because they give it to us, and we need to give it to the community to look at, so, that's kinda like.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I might include something about, etc.
Sure.
That, with pending, uh, receiving of materials that would, that could. Oh, no, no, that's all right. And then, the only thing I can just is, uh, no, it's the liniers, no, which is, or, any question, no, curb, I'd. And I kinda wanna put it something like, I'll already base my community from there.
Okay.
Like that's. But that'd be cool. Just, I think it's a, a heat of, of. There's problems down there.
The problems are the people who are, people who don't live here and won't be there.
Correct.
There's some communities that, yeah.
Yeah, it's passing the special traffic sign, okay. We want their support, and so.
I, well, we're wanting them to, do some aside, is the liniers, put the, the questions up, don't, curb.
We could, we could, you know, and I don't know why they couldn't put this up there, uh, is, on, on the sides, is, and we, I think we did talk about it, it's like a flashing traffic sign.
We actually, we had that started.
Yeah, we had it in. But no, no, not a flashing stop sign.
No, no, I, but it started at the light, we talked about like, uh, here comes Sierra, towards Crown. There's that light, like, like, hey, and, and it's just that one.
So, well, yes, that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, no one expressed anything to that, it was, it was like, you should turn around with the, with the crown, it's like, wait, what, what is this gonna do for us? Like, this doesn't do anything, it's like.
Okay, so I'm going to write a comment letter on the post configuration, yes, to the liniers, equestrian signs, flashing light, but no to curb slash island, based on community effect, pending receipt of materials that would, would. But, that, we wouldn't provide a public to review.
We would say, somebody.
Long motion, but it's.
Sorry.
All right, we're set. Good, good, second. Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion's here. Thank you, good. Uh, all right, please step in.
Oh, okay. Well, this one.
Yeah, so, I think, what we started was that, uh, I know, I drove by, they were, you know, that.
I went to that, and then I also, Tracy Cusson went to that, and I saw her comments on it.
Yeah.
Same question she asked, I asked.
Yeah.
What was that? What was the question?
What were the questions?
The questions of how they're coming along, and what they were building there, and also, this added county, all of them. And they're being let alone.
Yeah, so, so the, the, the main thing that's kind of.
And, and what they want to do is, um, not a monastery, it's martial arts, they want to, they want to attract the youth.
In martial arts, we have martial arts studio.
Yes, we do.
Where.
Breaking.
Yeah.
It's breaking, I'm telling you, God, just bring it here, online, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but this is, he wants to attract the youth, uh, is what he's making.
Your own style.
Yeah. And a monastery.
Yeah.
And, and it's prayer.
Style martial.
Yes, the prayer, yes, the stairway to heaven, because people who go there and follow their very life, they would, uh, pray their prayers, or insects, or whatever.
So, so, so I think the, the main issue on what's on here is that they have, well, segment part of it, but they have no permit for the event. Other organizations that are, the events, uh.
Special event.
Special hat permit, they have UCB for that, and, and it goes through the process, and, so.
Yeah, they used to call it a cup, but now it's called a sack.
Yeah, well, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I see it coming on, because I, I saw it coming through on, on.
Yeah, so, they have, animal, animal.
Animal, this is like, yeah, farm tick.
Farm tick.
So, uh, so they, they, by every year, they, they have a big event, and they do that, and it's, um, and they're similar, I would say, I would argue, they're a very similar situation. I'm being dragged to, this isn't like it's similar, that's where both of them, I don't know, like, down, and I, or somewhere, it's like, it's, it's cut away where they're all marketing home, Sierra, just like, you know, when you're at, uh, the farm sanctuary, that, that is a long, I see you go, it's, it's very similar. And, so, it's, I don't see how we can say, yeah, farm sanctuary, you know, like, you know, you're supposed to be a good member of our community, you're, you know, we want everybody to do, and then not expect them to.
Exactly. Exactly.
And, and so I think that's part of it, the other side too is, the backdrop, that too is, they have a site plan, so like, how are you having a vet, with a site plan?
And how are you having statues?
Yeah.
And how are you having anything? And there's somebody living in front of that.
Yes.
Well, not even, he is. And, and now they're just paying the parking lot and striped it.
Yes.
Please relax. Yeah, they, well, I just saw it today for the first time, so I don't know where this.
They were doing it the other day. Yeah, they're doing the gardens.
Yeah, they're adding more to the property.
And they're calling statues, they're, they're making, they said.
More statues?
No more. But that's it, that's enough.
There's already too many, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I know.
Kind of out here. And, and so, Stan, for that, I want everybody to know this. East, East L A, in their C S D prohibits statuary invisible from the law. Why can't we?
I looked at the out of the temple, they're in L A, but. Right, my agent, the way you look through this, it's a temple. But I've never seen that many statues like they have.
Yeah, well, they said explicitly, they told us here, they, they give the law through it.
It's just, it's.
Right.
Way side.
Oh, good.
That's what they said, right here. Yeah, yeah. It's funny, yeah.
Yeah, why not just? So, so, I, I mean, they got, well, this is, I think, um, one, I don't know if you know if there's any open, either any violations of the. I think you should have something. Well, I don't.
They're being let alone.
Yes, those be, yeah. So, so I think we need to remind them that because we need to know their violation. And if they haven't done investigation, then it's, Oscar, the government, or a, it, it's probably not a lot. For them to come out and see all the, the wonderful things that have been done with, website plan, other than escape, drawing, uh. Square, uh, you know, hey, we, yeah, so, so I think, I think that, that probably, it was certified.
Okay, so I can only write a letter stating events are occurring without permits and uses are on hold with outside plans. Yeah. They have a ask, but certainly there is, and it's living there.
Who they ask that? But they said they have a bathroom in the kitchen room, and they do.
So the bathroom, the bathroom, wait a minute, they.
I, I saw it, because they, it's went out, they need to show me. And they gave it doors, what happened there, that they could fly.
Did they tell you they added a bathroom in the kitchen?
There was that bathroom here. I just, this is like the bathroom, this is the kitchen here, because they're cooking the meals before the event. Oh, like there, that's.
This is a.
They're cooking there.
My kitchen.
But I'm not about, uh, commercial cooking, it's a party, but I like it. So I think you can either party, but not.
They accept donations in this, right?
I, I didn't see any.
Well, I was told that they did. That they, they, they something like that. Not, you know, donations.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that's the thing, because I'm realizing now we, we sent things saying.
I don't know, we, well, not for a long time.
No, not for a long time, but we sent very specific things about certain, you know, eight, how we, you know, did a permit, like, how did they, these statues up? And there was a lot of, and so, to me, there are concrete things unrelated to the statue, you know, statue part of the problem, uh, with compliance. But there's other things that are violations that should be under, this is no joke, because they're go bags. There's nothing. So, so then they, I mean, literally, that's almost the same, I'm like, hey, I'm just gonna do this.
And the D P.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, so that, so, so I already, we, we, it's just, I will rewrite a letter stating events are occurring without permits, there aren't going about site plans. No person's living there, they have a commercial kitchen, they're cooking the event, how do they have permits about the site?
Yes.
Yeah, because they have to put out the, what they call, it's like.
Yeah, they have a lot of that and stuff.
What they call them, it's like a party, especially if they get permanent, right?
Yeah, well, for, for, like you said, the, the farm sanctuary, every year they have a public event.
Oh, yeah.
And they get a permit, and so they have to go to the county and say, hey, we're having this event, it's gonna be X number of people, we're gonna have this, that, and the county. It, it, I've never seen about, you know, actually, she's true, like, because it's their.
Oh, yeah, and, and even though they're not allowed, reasonable. Even Thousand Trails God is temporary use permit, so it's supposed to. And the county approved a Bible reliable.
Yeah, yeah.
Three thousand people, that's the number of people who were there, and that's not even allowed on the code, county group, you had to get an actual C V for that. Not a, uh, temporary use permit.
Yeah, so, so the point being is just, if you're new here, they, they actually give us a letter, we.
I thought you might, you might have held any standard, the one thing I didn't comply with. Yeah, you remember when Jackie said your plan to invite them to come, they need me? I'm not going to invite them, I clearly I'm not going to invite them, I said that they couldn't be invited. I don't have a connection with them, I don't contact them, I don't know that they've even emailed us, I mean, all the communications have been. I think maybe they have, they have most, most of the communication, keep up with your.
Yes, I don't think we have.
I think I got, I got their site plan, I think I got from Tina, I know that I got it.
Well, he came and showed us the, the drawing.
Oh, that's right. Yes, and I think I got it a copy, but I can't remember now, so.
Yeah, and, and she's willing, uh, a, a more professional, I, I'm actually serious, it was like, yeah, well, that's at least a problem.
Tina, that's your problem, you gotta help.
Yes, like, like, so that, like, that's what they should be, but like, you know, I mean, that's. Alright, okay, so, we go to that, right?
We need a second.
Okay, second, get second.
Okay.
Uh.
Okay. All right. Somebody else on the second.
Yeah, we're checking the other seconds, yeah. Alright, uh, we, you have a discussion, all fair?
Aye.
Both?
Office. Written by Director Estrella, just rushing to pull it up. Um, from the, the, the email that we sent about the, our pending appeal of the franchise ordinance. That, um. We want to know that it's still as pending, or it's still, it's still cited with what the permission say in Public Utilities Code. The Public Utilities Code says that if a protest is filed, the county shall, the agency shall convene a hearing. So we've always operated, it, it shall schedule a hearing, shall schedule a hearing, and shall, at the appointed time. Raise a hearing pass on any protest that's submitted. So, we did all those things, we submitted it, they scheduled the hearing, they notified the hearing, we needed the hearing. And so we said, okay, still have heard and passed on the petition, so, you know, we did, we can't. Just consider another franchise order, or, or change the original resolution, adopt on January 10th. Until we're ready to pass on our, on our, uh, petition, or, I mean, on our protest. So we, we did get an email back, or a, a letter back. I don't mind now, but the public works. Sorry. I don't have it. Okay, but, so, but their response was that they never convened a hearing, they cited the transcript from the January 14 hearing, saying we never convened a hearing. So therefore, you know, we didn't have a hearing. And so, that, your, your protest is pending and, you know, we should do whatever we want. But the weird thing with this letter was, this is what I wanted to talk about, was that, do you have, do you have the letter? Okay, because I can't supervise a hearing, I'm supposed to have a name for this, I'm having. But their, their response is, is an open admission that they violate the state law. That's what I don't understand, because in the state law. Um, it says you shall convene a hearing, and hear and pass on the protest. So, it was from, um, somebody at the board office, and it's written by Mark Estrella. I should just pull it, get, 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 get on the internet here, and then I can pull up the stuff, I'm sure. I know exactly, so, sorry. Like, I, the internet, I don't know, this is the one thing I can get.
Well, you're.
To me, to the internet, yes.
The.
Yeah, yeah, that was the name. Okay, we're. It was on, it was on Friday. It's Thursday, excuse me, Thursday, we were, we just had to update, so. Each time. I can't find it either, you know, I'm just gonna search on this one. Or, or you did.
Yeah. I, I don't believe.
Here it is, it was, it was. Yeah, I'm in third, it's okay. So it says, what they say is. Especially, I got there. Um, as your letter corrects the date, on January 10th, the board supervises approval of the resolution. Pardon the February 14 meeting, divided board received the town council protest. Your letter states that the February 14th board meeting chose, the board chose to adjourn the meeting without acting to hear and pass on the acting town council protest, which is correct. They convened the, they convened the board meeting and then never been here and passed. So they said, they state this required verification as reflected in board meeting transcript. Uh, the board did not commence a hearing on either the franchise ordinance or the acting town council's objections on February 14th. Instead, the board referred the end back to public works. Since the hearing was never commenced, it was not and could not have been adjourned. Similarly, it is not and could not remain adjourned. But that, them stating that is a statement that. We did not convene a hearing that is required by state law.
So, yeah.
I, I'm just stunned with that. Because it's like a, it's like. Because I thought we were kind of giving them a, like, a, 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 okay.
An opportunity.
Yeah, to, let's say, okay, let's all just pretend you apply the state law, and then it's adjourned. And so why are you going to re-adjourn it? Because you can't adjourn another state law, it says that, that this can be, that the action can be adjourned from time to time, it says that. So, that was odd, it was just like, okay, we did everything, so, and then they said, no, we didn't have a hearing. So, I, I, I'm puzzled, so then it says, um. Then they're saying, section 6232 of the Public Utilities Code requires a hearing on a resolution of intent to grant a franchise take place not less than 20, or more than 60 days after. I'm like, exactly.
Exactly, yeah.
So, the board did not hold a hearing on a franchise order.
Yes.
Yes, exactly. Thus, the board is now prohibited from setting a hearing on either, the, the law doesn't say that, law doesn't say that at all.
Yeah, and this is never said.
Because what all you had to do to tick marks on the thing was, schedule a hearing and convene at the time and place set for the hearing. All of those they did, they were all there. They were convened at 9:00 A M, February 14th, 9:30 A M, February 14th. That was the time and place set for the hearing, so they actually did everything they were supposed to do. So, is that the one that they're getting? No, no, this is, this one. This was a year, well, this is a year, almost a year and a half ago.
Oh, yeah.
February of 2023.
Oh, 2023.
So it says, the board retains discretion pursuant to 6232 of the Public Utilities Code to pass a new resolution. Uh, of intention to grant the franchise. No, actually, they don't. 6232 does not grant on that, 6232 says, you receive a protest, you shall hear and pass on it. Or, you know, they have three choices, they can. Improve the franchise, first say the protest is without merit, then they can, can go or approve it. Or they can say, we approve the franchise, but you gotta fix these things to address this in the court. Or they can say, we deny the franchise because of whatever reason included protest. And they didn't do any of those things. So, it's, it's very awkward, I don't know. Says, then, regarding potential future actions, the application to the franchise ordinance remains pending, that means, you have those applications. The board retains discretion pursuant to blah, 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 to pass a new resolution. They don't cite what section of 6232, and I guarantee it's not there. As of this writing, no such action is scheduled, if the board must approve a new resolution, it would be required pursuant to 6232 of the Public, Public Utilities Code to notice a new hearing. So, it, it apparently says that they have no action, they're no, they have no intention of doing anything. And there's no action scheduled on it at all. I mean, I, I, I've never seen an agency say, no, we vote the law.
But, but also.
And why are you allowed to do what?
But also we did, like, like, what, what we did was, like, it's bizarre.
Yeah, well, they don't commit to taking it, I think that they don't say whether or not they vote the law, we're pointing that.
That does the law.
They're ignoring. You know, and the fact is that they did everything the law required. Except for passing.
Except for what they're required.
Well, I mean, it, it doesn't say you have to convene a hearing.
Sure.
It says you will convene at the time and place for the hearing, which they did, so. So I don't know what if you want to do that. So they're saying that when we do this res, if, if we do another resolution, then you can bring your protest again. Such a protest you do, and any time before that hearing, the acting town council could make a written protest against the grant of the franchise ordinance.
We did.
Such protests could include recent written protest letter meetings every night, as well as any other written objections upon, receiving any objections. The board would hear and pass upon them as required, see, they're actually saying.
Exactly. Yes, they did, yeah.
So, would you, would we just resubmit the original? Protesters, we can't resubmit the original protest, because we have to see what they're. The original protest was based on the stuff that they said in the original resolution, which was full of all kinds. Uh, yes. So, so, whatever, I mean, they, we, we have a protest, maybe it'll be, it'll be filing, I don't know, until we see it.
Okay.
So, but as they're.
Really can't do anything until we see.
Yeah, but they're, they can't, the whole point is, they can't just come up with a new resolution, because ours is still pending. It's, it's still pending, yeah, and while they're saying it's not, because.
They just.
It's, they're not gonna ever, well, exactly, uh, they, they, yeah. It's kind of like, you know, weird, precarious statement, yeah? Well, I mean, they, they, they violated the Public Utilities Code pretty lightly, and they admitted in different places, but. I don't know, I, I just don't know, we could do that, obviously, very well. Yeah. I'm a little. Here we are at another catch 22. Yes. So, whose, whose attention should that be, that they violated state law? Well, in our letter, we pointed it out, we said, this is, well, actually, that's not true. Our letter said, this is what the law says, you shall do this, you did A, B, C, and you still have heard and passed, so it's still pending.
Because I said, just put it on your lip.
Yes, exactly. Well, because we understood that they're, they're planning on someday, their plan right now, is articulated here as well, is. Their plan is to someday write another resolution and adopt. And when, we, that, that's what we understood from them, and that's why we wrote the first letter, saying, we understand your planning on just doing another resolution, you can't. Because ours is still, yeah, and they haven't acted on this one, you can't just like. So, and, and what's weird is, the board romanticized how it works, but not with the direction of reviewing a resolution, they just. You know, I, I. It's really confusing, you know, deep in that one, yeah. You know, I, I just, I don't know what to do, we're saying that. I've, I've just never had an agency say, yeah, we know that's what the law says, and we just, we all start. So, we never tried, to leave a place, so. So, you can do it more. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think I'd much to forward and. You know, subject them or go back to them. Yeah, well, I mean, you mean, we could write another letter, or, you know. I mean, we can say, do you realize that you just admitted in two different places in this letter that you. But I don't know if there's any point to that, I don't think, so, so either. Don't listen to I. Or, or we might, we can. Oh, I know, but that's right, too. Yeah.
I, I.
Respond to us.
Yeah. We're calling them out, and they're saying, well, we did it, we admit that we did it.
Right, there's, there's, that must be said, I'm like, okay, no, we're not.
I can't imagine how they would even respond to us.
I'm trying to think how we should respond then.
No, I know, and see him, Jackie, it's. Same, Jackie, it's.
But, you know, it's only because. Yeah, I think, it's, I don't know, this is the shocker. Yeah. There are no words.